This meeting is now called to order. Would Billy Pickney please lead us in the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Roland Day. Roland Day. Thank you. Councilman Ventura, would you like to have a few remarks about Mr. Day?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to give you a little background about who Roland was, because I think once we start talking about it, a lot of people are going to remember him. He was born September 23rd, 1946, in Franklin, Jersey. He was a veteran who served in the Vietnam War. He proudly gave everything to his country. And by the way, some of you may not know this, but if you were here in 2018, you remember, he was in a band, and he was a singer. And when we had our reord back in 2018, Roland was excited to perform and make sure everybody was in there when he did his rendition of God Bless America. He was an active member of the American Legion Post 101 here in town for the past 28 years, and he served the Legion as a past commander, as well as an adjunct co-officer. In addition to what he did in Little Falls with the Post, he also served as the county commander at the state, as well as the county vice commander at one point, and even as a state vice commander. He did a lot for the veterans over the years, not just for folks in Little Falls, but the community as a whole. And for many years, he was also the driving force for events in town to honor the men and women who served our country, including the Memorial Day Parade and the ceremony that always followed, as well as the activities on Veterans Day. He worked tirelessly to make sure that the men and women that served who resided in Little Falls knew about the Legion and why it was important to get involved. As he always used to say when he came here or we'd have other events, he's like, "Look, I can't, I won't be here forever, and we need new members to carry it towards." That was something that he was always adamant about, making sure that the history and tradition of those that served in the military was honored. Earlier this month, on my way home from work, Roland gave me a call. And it was basically, he was calling a lot of people to say goodbye. And one thing he said that I want to make sure that everyone realizes is, not to forget his memory, you know, all the legacy that he did here. He just wants to make sure that people recognize him in any way, shape, or form. And the one thing that we've been doing right now is reaching out to the folks at the Post, including Fitz, their commander, as well as Herb Richter, who's in charge at this point, to see what we can do to honor Roland's memory, especially with Veterans Day coming up in just about like three weeks. So, the way I just want to end it to let everybody know is that this Sunday, at the American Legion Post 101, it's on Main Street. The Post is actually hosting a memorial service for Roland that will take place between 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. All are welcome to join. I encourage those that are here and those that are watching on YouTube to come and honor someone that really did a lot for his town and for his country. So again, our thoughts are with Roland, his fiancee, and his sisters. And again, I just want to say thank you, Roland, for everything that you did. You're going to be missed.
Thank you, Councilman Ventura, for those kind remarks about Mr. Day. I'm sure he's, I'm sure he has a big smile on his face. Mrs. Kraus, please read the Statement of Public Notice.
Take notice, adequate notice, that this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJISA 10-4-8, and NJISA 10-4-10 as follows. The notice of the meeting was promptly posted on the local board at the Municipal Building, located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January 2nd, 2019. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed to the Austin Township Clerk on Saturday.
Mrs. Kraus, at this time, call the roll.
Councilmember Corneille, present. Councilmember Quadi, present. Councilmember Rezcheri, present. Council President.
Present. Mayor Dan Manning.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, we have a number of special guests joining us here in Little Falls. Our New Jersey Jackals had an incredible season this year, winning themselves the Can-Am League Championship. And we had a number of their office personnel, as well as one of the players here, joining us. And I'm going to call the names and ask that they join me up here for the reading of a proclamation honoring our New Jersey Jackals. We have with us Brett LaFard from the Jackals joining us. We have President of Baseball Operations, Al Dorsa. We have Governor Nicole Carpenyon. We also have with us Little Falls' very own Billy, Billy the Bat Boy, with the Jackals joining us. He's a local record senior of the league. And we have joining us this evening one player who we're going to have join us up here as well, Christian Testor, who's here. And before we get to the proclamation, it pales in comparison to the giant trophy here that they have, but for Bill. All right. Now we have a proclamation for them that we hope will be displayed proudly there. And our proclamation reads, "Whereas, the New Jersey Jackals are being recognized for winning their first ever Can-Am League Championship, defeating the Sussex County Miners 8-7 on September 15th, 2019, winning the series 3 games to 1. And whereas, the New Jersey Jackals, who proudly play regular Little Falls at Yogi Bear Stadium, have been an independent baseball league staple for the past 22 years. And whereas, during their successful 2019 playoff run, the Jackals advanced to the finals with a dramatic winner-take-all game five victory in 10 innings over the Troy Rivera's Angels." They're going to be there. "And whereas, the New Jersey Jackals, a team with the richest history of success since their inception in 1998, carried that momentum into the finals against their New Jersey rivals. And whereas, we recognize the Jackals for winning the franchise's fifth championship in team history, and look forward to the Jackals winning the sixth title in 2020. And now therefore, be it resolved that today, we are here to honor the New Jersey Jackals for an outstanding season. And be it further resolved that I, Mayor Jamesville for Danielle, do hereby recognize October 21st, 2019, as New Jersey Jackals' Day in the Township of Little Falls." Do you guys want to get together?
Sure.
There we go.
Oh, yeah.
There we go.
All right, a little longer so you can see your name.
Yes, we want to take a picture. What do you want to do? Do you want to take a picture?
Oh, you want to take, you don't want to leave it with him? Sure?
Do you want to leave it here?
You want to take a picture?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more.
Thank you.
meeting of September 23rd and the meeting of October 7th? May I have a second, please? Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Corneille, yes. Councilmember Quadi, yes. Councilmember Rezcheri, yes.
Yes. Dr. Cudillo asked me to just highlight some of the points of the strategic plan. Unfortunately, she could not attend the meeting and present the plan herself. For those, the copies are in the back of the room. If anyone does need a copy, please see Mrs. Kraus, and she will get you a copy. Some of the highlights of the main points are school campus safety, curriculum and instruction, athletics and activities, building grounds, and community engagement. Councilman Ventura?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Just got a couple of updates. We finished the radar checks throughout town. I spoke to the Sheriff's Department this morning, and I'm hoping to get the reports by the end of the week, so that we can take a look at those, and then we can have some discussions based on the results from the study. So I just wanted to give everybody an update on that. Again, just want to thank the State County Sheriff's Department for allowing us to have the two radars throughout town the last couple of months. And I'm looking forward to the results as are members of the police department. The other thing I just wanted to mention real quick was, over the weekend, Council President, Sova and I had a chance to attend the Girl Scouts Moving Up and Bronze Awards Ceremony over at Dulles Field, because we worked with the Girl Scouts last month to pull together a dog outfit over by Blue Street Park for the girls to play. It's a game that most of the Scouts play. And we were able to attend the ceremony and just present the awards to the girls. And I think Council President said it best, you know, the girls had a drive and dedication to get something done, and they accomplished it. So I just want to say congratulations again to the Girl Scout troop for moving up and also receiving their Bronze Award. The last update I have is, and I know I mentioned it briefly earlier, the Memorial Day Services will take place on Monday, November 11th, at 11 o'clock over at Veterans Day, I'm sorry, sorry. I know I mentioned that. Veterans Day, sorry, on Monday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. Please join us there. The veterans will be hosting this to honor those that serve. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Ventura. Councilman Quadi?
Thank you, Council President. So, October, as we acknowledge that the last meeting is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have our Domestic Violence Vigil on October 10th. It was, it was quite an event. I was very proud of the work that the committee did. I need to thank several people in this room, including Mr. Simone on the DPW, the Police Department, the Mayor Council for attending, the PEA, who helped us out with that as well, and the committee, Jeanne Clough, Marianne Holdup, started building in Kettering Rock. They put a lot of work into this event, and the highlight of which I was highlighting was a police officer named Lieutenant Heather Gilovich from the Morris County Police Department, who came and spoke about her experience as a domestic violence victim. Her training as a police officer probably is the reason why she survived a brutal attack several years ago. And the message that came through is, if this could happen to her, it could happen to anyone. And so, we had some other victims there, one who spoke and one who just attended because she heard about the event. So, as far as awareness goes, I think we did a really great job of getting it out there, getting the message out there that this could happen to anybody, and that people need to be proactive in helping the people who they think might be victims. And so, I look forward to doing it again next year, if that we get anybody to try.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Quadi, for that fine report. Councilmember Seaver?
Thank you. So, our library board is back in full swing with the school year. We had a meeting recently, and we are implementing several security upgrades to our library. They, thank you very much to Little Falls Police that have helped us with that. We are in the process of installing additional cameras, along with staffing requirements to keep everybody safe. We are also receiving an AED, and are looking to have CPR training for all our staff, as well as AED training. And so, again, a big thanks to the Police Department for helping us along with those recommendations. And then, again, please continue to check our website. You can also like Instagram and Facebook for any upcoming events happening at the library. Thank you.
Councilmember Corneille.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So, this past Wednesday, the Senior Advisory Board had a program that actually is going to repeat once a month called Lunch and Learn. And what it is, is that we bring either speakers or activities for our senior community to partake in or learn from, along with, you know, having some kind of lunch. Back in September, we had pizza and pencil drawing. And then, this past Wednesday, we had really excellent presentation from the sheriff, detectives from the Sheriff's Department on a really great program that Sheriff Burmuk's department has, where you can get for free a little GPS finder. And if you have, you know, a senior who's living with you that maybe, you know, has memory lapses, or gets lost, or has issues, or a young child, this little GPS can go on a belt, it could go on a shirt, and it gets tracked by the sheriff's office. And it's really wonderful, and there's no charge for it or for the tracking. And I think it's really an outstanding program, and seniors really love that. And they also talked about a few other things for safety for our seniors. And then, we had our county clerk, Danielle Ireland Inhofe, who gave a talk on the different programs that the clerk's office has for our seniors. And so, we're going to try to do this every month, and call it Lunch and Learn, and bring some other, you know, programs to our seniors. I mean, I'm Italian, so I figure if you feed them, they will come. And so, it kind of worked, because we had 42 people come last week. And based on that, our event of the year is this Friday, and that's the Harvest Moon Dinner Dance. And we are really excited about this. I believe that we have well over 80 people already responding. We think we're going to hit an all-time high. It's catered from a really great restaurant, and the mayor and council come and serve. And there's great music. So, if you know anybody who's a senior, it's free for all Little Falls seniors. And you can go on our town website to call and order to RSVP. And I want to thank three of my board members that are here tonight for all their hard work, and that would be Joan Inman, and Janet Coit, and Phyllis Dillon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Corneille, for all the fine work you do with that organization. We're going to flip back to Councilman Quadi. Tell us about this new event that we're doing on Halloween.
Thank you, Council President. So, I was thinking back to the Domestic Violence Vigil. I had to mention that we are planning a big event for Halloween this year. And so, at the end of Lower Road Park, I think it's sort of the, I don't know if you call it the best exit, the worst exit, but the center of town has become a destination for Halloween, first and second act. And so, we're going to try and help enhance the experience without taking away from it by having some food trucks available on Lower Road Park. They'll have some appropriate Halloween music, and we're going to have, we're going to have some lights in the area just to make the event safer. So, my understanding is that the council members and the mayor will be dressed up for the event, and we will be there from 6:00 to 9:00. Everybody gets hungry, and they rush to take their kids out trick-or-treating. And so, this will provide a destination where we can get together as a community, enjoy some food with the food trucks, have some music, and just make an event out of something that has been a grassroots event for many years in the center of town. And just try and enjoy a little bit.
Thank you, Councilman Quadi. Is Michael Quadi going to tell us his Halloween costume tonight?
He's never revealed it before Halloween yet. I don't think he's going to say.
Can I have a motion to open up the meeting for the public agenda items only? Can I have a second? Are those in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. Are those opposed, the motion signify by saying nay. I'm sorry. Do you have a report, council? Are we scot-free to the mayor? Geez, so mighty. We'll go back. We'll go back. Well, actually, he could wait a second. All right. So, let's, let's, let's just do this public comment right now. Mrs. Kraus, read the comment.
And we're going to address the township council. I do so with the council president. Please give your name and address to the record. Comments are limited to three minutes, however appropriate.
22 River View Circle. I just have a question about the radar. Was that a traffic survey from Main Street?
Councilman Ventura?
Yes, yes. We worked with the Sheriff's Department. We identified a number We identified a number of streets to run radar for about two weeks on most locations. So you saw it on Main Street in front of here, wasn't it, your version?
No, I was really more interested that a while back, Mayor Damiano said that he was hoping to get all of Main Street reclassified to 25 miles an hour, if I remember correctly. And I was wondering if that was in conjunction with changing the speed limit.
No, the most recent traffic studies that we're performing don't have anything to do with the 25 mile an hour change, although we have been working still on the 25 mile an hour change with our engineer, one with the county traffic engineer, and we are still working towards that. There are an enormous number of requirements that need to be met to surprisingly reduce speed limits. And you'd think it would be the opposite, which I'm sure also applies, but to reduce the speed limit, there are an incredible number of hurdles that need to be overcome. We're working towards that, but we're not doing that.
I would say that I'm not unhappy about that. I've been here long enough that I know where to slow down and what so. But so the traffic survey was to determine the amount of traffic?
No, what we were doing was, because a lot of times we hear from residents, whether it's the mayor, council, on social media or just emails, I've heard about some concerns on various streets around town. So we worked with the Police Department and we reached out to the Sheriff's Department to have radar set up on various streets so that we can see if it is a trend where, because we hear a lot of times, hey, they're speeding, so let's have it out there and let's see. Because what we're trying to look at with the Police Department or Transportation Committee standpoint is visiting the idea of possibly speed humps on some streets and also maybe adding four-way stop signs on some streets, other signage to kind of slow things down. So why not look at the data and see what's there before making any decisions at this point? So that's why we're here.
And the, I don't remember, maybe for the, maybe I'll come back for the other comment.
Very good. Thank you. Jim, can you come back up? Councilmember Seaver?
Disclaimer to Councilman Van Cherry. So when you say radar, it's not a traffic stop, it's to capture down, correct?
No, so it's an apparatus that basically is parked in front of certain streets and you may have seen it around town where it said, "Have a nice day, slow down, school's back." That was the radar.
Oh, not the one that shows?
Not the vehicles are standing there.
No, no, not the one that displays the speed you're doing.
Oh, it does, but you don't see the speed. The way these are set up, you don't see, because what happens is if you want real data, if you keep seeing the speed, what's going to happen? You're going to slow down or speed up. So say, "Have a nice day, school's open, drive carefully," the data's being captured.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for Agenda Items Only? Floor is open.
Louis Fernandez, 54 Harrison Street.
Good evening.
How are you? I just saw something that is not quite clear, so I would love to, for one of you, to elaborate a little bit. And it happens to be the last resolution, establishing payment schedule for highway, for Highview Homes of Toluwa LLC. Why are we paying? Why are we paying this?
Right, so your question is why are we putting this resolution that we've decided?
For the development of 139 Center Avenue, AKA the Abbey Development?
Right. I'll have the mayor explain why this is on our agenda this evening. Mayor?
Sure. So as has been discussed in a number of meetings in the past 12 to 20 few months, something that the township has, I think, been very strict in complying with or having developers comply with is collection of any sewer fees associated with developments. This is really the first, aside from making 24 townhomes, this is the first substantial project that we've seen developed in town where there's a substantial number of units, which means that the sewer fees associated with it would be relatively steep, in excess of $200-plus thousand here. What the developer had requested of the municipality is that they're not looking to not pay any of them, they were just looking to be able to pay sewer fee as each unit was issued a CO. And the way that it works is there are application fees, $500, associated with every single unit. We're required that the developer pay the $500 application fee for all 50 units prior to any COs being issued. After that happens, as each CO is issued to each unit, they're going to pay the sewer fee, that's the connection fee, in accordance with the organs that we have in town, which means that units 1 through 5 will pay $6,000 per unit as each one is issued CO. Units 6 through 15, they will pay $5,000 per unit as each one is issued a CO. Units 16 through 25, they'll pay $4,000 per unit as each one is issued. And the same for units 26 through 50, that's a $3,000 per unit fee, and they'll pay each of those as the COs are issued. So they are not getting away with not paying them, they're just looking to pay them as the COs are issued for each unit and as each unit is sold, which is really...
Sort of installments or whatever it's doing. But also, I think, it's only my opinion, the same courtesy should be applying to the taxpayers that cannot apply, cannot pay the taxes, which is, by the way, a minimum amount.
There's no way payment there.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fernandez. The floor is open. Seeing who else can forward, have a motion to close to the public? Have a second, please. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Mayor Damiano, just a question from Mr. Fernandez is how come I can't have my payments over a period of time?
No, can I go back?
Go ahead.
I remember a while back, I don't know if you were here or not, but I remember a while back that a homeowner came to the township and saying that he was having difficulties meeting the tax because, and he wasn't given that chance of, you know, extended, let's make it, instead of a lump sum, let's give you a three installments or whatever. No, he was told either pay and pay the 18%, pay or pay the 18% penalty, which I think is, I think he's sort of, you know, I don't agree with it because if a developer, if a developer that plays with hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe millions of dollars...
Well, explain this, Mr. Fernandez, Mayor.
Any owner can pay their taxes and installments, so long as those installments are in prior to the final due date, the owner can do it. So rather than paying quarterly, if you want to budget and pay a third of that each month to reduce the balance, so long as it's paid prior to the final due date, the total sum you do, that's acceptable. This, again, this resolution does not address the taxes. Whatever the assessment is...
No, I didn't say it was addressing the taxes.
Wherever the assessment is of these units, the owner, the developer, will pay the taxes on those units. They are not able to pay the taxes over a period of time. This is a sewer fee connection that they are allowed to pay as each one turns on. This is a number, a large number of homes were developed, each one would pay as the CO was issued to that individual home.
But how come, and going back to this point, how come a homeowner, when it applies for a permit to do something, has to pay it right there? Has to come to City Hall and pay the fee right there? And how come these...
A homeowner would pay the sewer connection fee when the CO is issued.
When the CO is issued.
Correct. Here, there's just 50 separate COs that will be issued. And because these are all for sale units, each one will, the COs will be issued at different times as each unit is sold.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes, and Council President, as far as my report, I am thrilled to announce that the municipality has received a $150,000 grant from the Open Space Trust Fund in the State County that can be applied towards the turf field that was applied for in the grant just recent past year. That is a substantial grant from the State County Open Space Trust fund that will assist in offsetting the turf costs. Something that has been discussed and I have approached the county about is the possibility of also applying to the turf field, the grant that we received last year for Lewis Field, for Lewis Street Field. There was discussion at the time that, you know, some major improvements could be made to that field. I believe there are even discussions that it seems that while Lewis Street is a great field, that's a practice a lot, unfortunately, it doesn't really meet regulation sizes for games. And if there is turf down at Duma, there would be a lot more opportunity for real pursuits down there. And therefore, we were going to approach the county requesting that they allow us to utilize the $250,000 that we have in Lewis and as the master plan is going to allow us to apply that towards the field. There was also some discussion, the president's down at Lewis, who was concerned that by upgrading that, maybe addition traffic there, the park is not the same as it is by the rec. So this might be a better use of the funds by applying it towards our field at Duma. It's an expense that we are going to take on, where the improvements that were going to be made at Lewis were going to be some of the materials and dedicating them on over the local needs necessary. But this is not an expected or anticipated cost that we're going to have. So offsetting it may be the most prudent option here. So hopefully, we'll be able to apply $400,000 towards the total cost of the turf at Duma. We are still exploring some options for some additional crew makers funding and additional funds, but we're not sure of the probability or likelihood of those coming to Duma. We were thrilled back to an additional $150,000 awarded to the municipality this year. As far as rubber...
Mayor, can you just circle back around? What would be the timeframe of the turf field?
Sure. So what we are trying to accomplish, how that the grant has been awarded, is we are looking to have this field open for September of 2020 season, the beginning of the fall season. This is something that, you know, gives us a little less than a year to accomplish. There are some substantial engineering requirements that will come into this, like in the field, the base layer of the rock and the drainage, as well as the turf itself. There is, again, definitely a good amount of work that needs to be organized to make this happen on this timeframe. I do believe that it is possible, likely to be construction on over the course of the summer, which unfortunately is going to interfere a little bit with our summer rec programs, so we're going to have to coordinate with them a bit. But getting this turf field in for the beginning of our fall season, I think, is something that can be accomplished. As everyone knows, you drive by the rec anytime, on a weekend or a night during the fall season. And that field has hundreds of kids and hundreds of other parents that are out there watching, coaching, and insisting there. And that field is heavily used, it is something that could really be improved there. I always say, it doesn't matter if the, our DPW does an incredible job containing that field, it's just the amount of usage that that field has in terms of basis. I've said if Yankee Stadium grounds crew was stationed at Duma field year-round, by the end of the fall season, there's no money in the world that can maintain the grass on that field. There's just hundreds of kids that are in the same spots, hundreds of times over the course of the night, and the field really does take a beating. So we are hopeful that we can have that in by fall of 2020. And while we're discussing the turf field, I know there's some concerns about, you know, is it really prudent to install a turf field only if it is placed hopefully within a two to three-year period for a flood tunnel that may make its way from the Petman River to the sacred? And the answer to that is yes, it is. I will explain why. The reasoning behind that is, speaking to the turf companies, we're going to be able to actually roll up the turf, if the tunnel is going to be coming through a particular area of the field, we're going to roll up the turf and store it in large storage pots while the construction is underway. We can then take that turf, aside from losing some of the base, you know, rockwork that's underneath the drainage, aside from fixing that, we'll be able to then take the turf and place it back on the field without it being dampaged or really lost, for a sense of the word. And it will still be there, it'll be stored securely, and we can just roll it back out. So we will not lose the turf or lose our investment that we're putting into Duma field. You know, as thrilled as I am about the Army Corps project, which is going to be one of my next discussions, you know, I don't feel that waiting for the Army Corps to come from Duma field with flood tunnel should really, or our turf project should be relying upon the conclusion or realization of the Army Corps project. So I'd like to move forward with that. It brings me to my next topic, which will be, I'll jump out to work with a minute, the Army Corps project. For those of you who have not seen it, it is now posted on our website. It was part of the genome blast. The Army Corps of Engineers has released its new research study. They are looking for comments, looking for comments at this time. The project is a $170 million project that's going to be a tunnel that diverges water from the Petman River near our DPW yard and diverges to the Saint River by going under the, the other DPW yard, under the building that is essentially behind the rec center currently, going across the small Duma field, across the Meat Cutters parking lot there into the Saint River. It is three-quarters, or it can be eligible for the three-quarters of its total funding coming from the federal government, with the additional quarter hopefully to be made up by the state. It is something that, again, seems to be as real as any project that has ever been presented for the Petman River. We have, it is a probably about 1,300-page document that is comprised of a couple dozen links that you can find. Again, the link is on the town website. It goes through the entire analysis of what will be there and they are now requesting comments if you have any on it. Some people have had expressed concerns to me of, well, is it going to be a problem for the Saint River if we're putting additional water there? So the answer to that question, and in my conversations with the Army Corps of Engineers is, the answer is no. And the reason that it will not be an issue is because that same water basically makes it to the Saint River at almost the same time, just a couple hundred yards from the downstream. It will divert it only by several hundred yards, it will pop out by the, what is now against the Meat Cutters Hall, rather than where it currently makes its way into the river, which is just slightly further downstream in Little Park. The topography there is also such a level where the Petman will divert it to the Saint River during bigger flood events and during smaller rainstorms, but the Petman will still be running water downstream. And from the larger events, it will take a handful of that water to the Saint River. The topography of the Saint compared to the Petman, the Saint River is substantially lower, so we don't have to worry about backflow coming to the Saint River into the Petman and causing an issue there. One of the other ways that we're, and frankly, this will be a major improvement for our Jackson Park area of town. If the Petman River is able to have 30, 40, 50% of this water taken from by the flood tunnel prior to ever reaching the Jackson Park area of town, I believe that this is an opportunity to really save homes, to save property, and most importantly, as we know in that area, to save lives. That is something that, again, if the funding is made available by the federal and state governments, I believe that this is a good project for this area of town. One of the other major things that is not included in this phase of the report, is something that we are actively pushing for, is the bank stabilization of the Petman River upstream. As great as the flood tunnel is and will be once and sold, the issue is that trees continue to be eroded further upstream and they come down and cause damming and blockages of our bridges. The water will still be ejected out of the river, the river itself will not be the issue, it's the water that is dammed up and blocked at our bridges. I think every bridge along the Petman was, I'm not an engineer, I'm not going to pretend to be, but my, the way I conceive it is as each bridge downstream is approached by water, they become more narrow and narrower and narrower as you get further downstream, not the entire width, but by the butt necks and the, the center of columns and the water-bearing columns in between. And I just, to me, can't conceive that that was a good engineering idea, but it is what it is right now, what we're dealing with. So this bank stabilization, I believe, will assist in preventing the undermining of trees and erosion around them, which then causes the damming of the bridges and the water to breach the banks. So that is something that we are continuing to actively push for. That is by far the far cheaper component of this entire project, so it is something that we are going to continue to push for along the Petman and with the Army Corps of Engineers. The other Army Corps of Engineer update that I have is recently, our Congresswoman Maggie Sherrill held an event at the Wayne Library for all the mayors that are affected by the Saint River. And there were a whole handful of mayors up and down the Saint River, from Pompton Lakes down to Wayne, Little Falls, Little Park, Fairfield, that you name it, if they are along the Saint, they were almost all there. There was a Colonel from the Army Corps of Engineers, there were DDP members there, there were several state representatives there, and we were talking about the concerns of the Saint River and how there's been little to no action by the federal government, by the state, et cetera. And we found out, and this was just made up and to others, that there was actually federal legislation that has been passed several years ago that actually prohibits the Army Corps of Engineers from spending a little dollar on any study of the Saint River. We begged and pleaded with our Congresswoman Maggie Sherrill to overturn that legislation to begin funding that project again. And it was amazing just looking at the work that had been put into the prior... And it was amazing just looking at the work that had been put into the prior projects and the prior recommendations of the Army Corps. The one that was most popular was the flood tunnel that would take the water much further downstream and bring it all the way down to Newark Bay before it evidence anywhere between Farnoosh and Newark. The biggest objection was, well, who wants a tunnel underneath their home? Well, this tunnel would be in the bedrock, three to four hundred feet below the surface. And there was actually an engineer there who said, I live in Manhattan, you know, I think there's tunnels under every building and every street in Manhattan. You're out of your mind. Manhattan is all tunnels, and nobody ever knows it. So, you know, one of the complaints was, well, there's going to be a tunnel under school. I believe that location was over 400 feet below the school. There was going to be little to no disturbance whatsoever of the school, even when the drill was happening, they would be, essentially, some of the people wouldn't even notice what's happening. And, but again, there were just some objections, and actually, there's very few objections to the tunnel. In fact, there were roomful of, I'd say, about 45, 50 people. I believe there were 48 that raised their hand for favor of the flood tunnel and two that were opposed to it, who were actually more in favor of buyouts than the flood tunnel. And the individuals who were in favor of the buyouts, they were from municipalities and have a much larger, ratable base and thousands, tens of thousands of more homes than Little Falls does, which makes the buyout of 100 homes something that is extremely sustainable, where in Little Falls, losing 100 or 140 homes as we have is something that is difficult, if not impossible, to sustain if you have to do this again and again and again. So there was some, I'd like to say, forward progress made to the extent that our Congresswoman now is very clear understanding that the legislation that is currently blocking all the funding associated with the studies and research that goes into the Saint River is something that we'd asked her to actively work to overturn and to deregulate so that we can begin making some progress again on the Saint River. So that is something that she is going to be going back down to DC inward, you know, from top of her mind, and hopefully we'll be able to make some progress again along with the Petman on the Saint River. Last, any questions in the council?
Go ahead, Mayor.
All right. Sorry, I can't respond to that. We have one last update on the road work. We have, as most people know, there's still the road work ongoing with the electric upgrade as well as the water upgrade. The water upgrade this week, for the first time since it started, is actually not closing the road down. They are working on the Petman River Bridge every day this week. While there's some land Shen's in effect, the road is open. I will be talking tonight in that area. It's a miracle, thank God, to find you back at Main Street in Little Falls. I don't know if there will still be some additional minor closures in the future, but they did, the last time I talked to them, this was a week and a half ago, indicated that the work would most likely be concluded by Halloween, because I actually asked them if we could use some of their lights for Halloween in the park if they were still around. And he said, if we're still here on Halloween, I'm going to quit. So we're hoping that anyone that was in the area of Schumacher Showway today saw that there was a, not necessarily a traffic jam, a very tight leadership, as they continued to work there. I was pleased that the road was not closed at all. It will not be tonight either, but there is definitely still some congestion there. I know for the weekend, there was a lot of loose rocks in the debris in the area that caused, well, I guess as a result of the plates that were installed, a lot of the rocks were loosened up in the area. And I did ask them to care a little bit better for the cleanup. The issue is at the end of each night, as they pack the asphalt around the big metal plates, it is pretty tighty by the time that they leave. Unfortunately, as cars drive over, the asphalt, the bigger rocks kind of five-way roost a little bit, and they end up causing a bit of a mess. So we asked them to be conscientious of that, but the balance that we weigh with the tightness and rocks for the short period of time has one to do with how quickly they can continue to move through this project. And I say that because when plates are utilized over a construction batch at the end of the evening or end of the day, until the following day, they probably, I'm going to make these times, assuming they're working on a shift, if they typically would spend the first hour excavating a hole and the last hour backfilling the hole, they're essentially two hours ahead on an eight-hour shift each day that they're able to just use plates, because they can simply remove the plates, continue to work without excavating another area, or having to backfill it later in the day. So we're hoping that by using these plates, we're able to move this project along at a quicker pace right now. Most of it will be out of the main street, at least for the remainder of this stretch. Then going to be, as I've discussed in the past, heading down Millmore, the second half, and they'll be in the second half for the majority of the winter, or probably into spring next year at some point. So we will be notifying residents as the project progresses. We will do our best to make sure that everybody can get it now, because they need to, and we'll discuss that with the contractor. But there is, as I know, and everyone here does, a lot of work happening in town. But once this is completed, at least the majority of the eastern side of town will have new gas, new water, and now, not that the electric company was directly, but new electric upgrades as well. So important infrastructure upgrades, necessary people in town, but we are continuing to look at it.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions or comments from the council at this time?
I have a question.
Councilman Ventura.
Mayor, obviously, they're going to be working through the threshold of paving over the road. I assume that there's no streets that are going to be paved this year, it's most likely the spring.
So we do have a 90-day selling period in town where we require, after work is concluded, a 90-day period where we ask, where we prohibit repaving. Because as you see with the trench work over a three-month period, a lot of it that started as a little bit of a hump ends up kind of compressing into the road. If the road was immediately repaved and cars drove over within three months, unfortunately, we end up with a bunch of mini trenches throughout town that would leave our roads in really bad shape for the 20 years until they're repaved. So we do require that. I don't believe the county is going to make any exceptions on Main Street for Main Street. Again, we're still working on Main Street every day right now, so I don't believe that they're going to leave there 90 days. Unfortunately, they did, they brought in our trenches back on Main Street in a month or two, late in the period days anyway. So, so no, unfortunately, I think we're going to continue working through the winter, which means that it's not going to be until the spring sometime when the patchwork being created again that will get them repaired.
And as you mentioned too, some of the trenches that are starting to pop off the parish streets, at some point, I assume the board company, P S A G, and others will adjust accordingly, especially as the winter makes snow, even with the plows or anything that arose, it's going to form more problems.
So the ones that were backfilled poorly and have really sunk, we do ask that they go back occasionally, fill again, because, yes, some of them create a major, like, divots for the others out there.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please. Count a second. Are there any questions concerning the consent agenda? Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Ordinar?
Yes.
Councilmember Quoddy?
Yes.
Councilmember Seater?
Yes.
Councilmember Venter?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1371.
Introduction of ordinance number 1371, an ordinance entitled, in order to make a statute for the town of Little Falls, by repealing in its entirety, chapter 164, entitled, property pending registration and maintenance, replacing chapter 164's, registration of port closure warnings and vacant property, with the second reading of the hearing scheduled for November 18th, 2019.
Have a motion to introduce ordinance 1371. A second, please. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll on 1371.
Councilmember Ordinar?
Yes.
Councilmember Quoddy?
Yes.
Councilmember Seater?
Yes.
Councilmember Venter?
Yes.
Councilmember President.
Yes. Have a motion to open to public comment for general matters only. Have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the council, the council, and the council president, please take a moment to address the record. Comments, arguments, if you're in a hurry, or if appropriate, you may grant additional time, with sole discretion of the council president.
The floor is open.
Jim Doran, I'm still at 22 Revue.
Can you try to speak into my press? Thank you.
Say, oh, Jim, Jim Doran.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. The flood tunnel from the Petman to the Passaic is estimated to cost $70 million. Did I get that right?
Hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy million dollars. How much would the flood tunnel to Newark Bay be estimated at?
The last time that was looked at was a long time ago. It would have been the largest tunnel in the world at the time, I learned that myself.
Yes.
Now that the law would be close to the biggest tunnel, but it was a several billion dollar project.
Right. I'm wondering.
So, you know, I did outweigh the, in order for FEMA to fund a project, the cost benefit analysis must be greater than the, meaning, whatever they estimate, the savings over time would be, must be greater than what the project cost would be, making it a project that is financially feasible. So they do to that. It was, the last time it was performed, 1.2 or something like that, you know, over one to one. So that is an analysis that's done for every single project, but because it's been so long since they've died, I'm sure the number has changed, but I'm also sure that the number that would be associated with damages to homes has changed as well.
Is there any possibility that dredging could take place? I know that where I see the river, in fact, going back 20 years now, I was in a canoe going towards Fern Island Park, and the dog we had at that time was swimming behind us. I turned around, and I thought he was walking on water. He was standing up on the approach to Fern Island Park, so there's basically no river bed, or there's no river channel in a significant portion of the river because of the buildup of silt from upstream. Now, I know that years ago, it was proposed to dredge, and it was defeated because of the toxic materials believed to be in the bed. Is it possible that some have learned how to detoxify some of the materials and?
Some of that same discussion was had at the meeting. It appears that the consensus was, there's no way based upon how contaminated some of the silt could be, that that seems like a very viable option in terms of, what we did to the DPW was either deregulating or facilitating or assisting in getting permits to do some desnagging and cleaning of the river for each of the municipalities, and they doing it as a entire countywide application that allowed everybody to desnag and clean the river, because that process is extremely hazardous, costing you time consuming for individual municipalities to do. So assistance in that was also discussed eventually, less than me, but many of them really gave the earful on that. So it was something that we're hoping also, assistance, helping keep it somewhere, you know, for a period.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The floor is open.
Louis Fernandez, 54 Harrison Street. Let's go back to that study that Techman River studied. Do you have, or was it mentioned by the Army Corps of Engineers, a starting date and an ending date on that report?
So it is about 1,300 pages, it's supposed to be about 1,300 of them, and a lot of the relevant portions, et cetera, portion that I believe are relevant.
Right.
All relevant to someone. The dates that they were originally targeting, I don't know if that's going to exist, was 2022.
Starting?
Starting. It was originally 2024, but that included a lot of property acquisition. It seems to believe that now because of the route that they're going to be going, there will be very little property acquisition that needs to be addressed. Therefore, they may be able to speed it up by two years. I'm not 100% confident in that, but 2024 was their original date, and then possibly 2022 as well.
And the project will last, how long? Two years, three years, four years?
It was a, it was a very timed process. I don't remember the exact time, it was over a couple of years, but again, that's over the entire stretch of it. And just because the flood tunnel itself, again, I agree, the most updated version of it, it's 30 or 40 feet wide and 25 or so long feet high, so it's huge. It's not even a small.
Also, maybe you can answer this, maybe you haven't read that yet. Once they, this tunnel, if it is in fact built, will that Jackson Park area, will that Jackson Park area be declassified as a flooding, flood area?
I can only hope so. I don't know. That would ultimately be up to FEMA, I'm sure, who has all their own flood maps and their own mapping done. I would hope though, if the Army Corps is doing this project to keep an area out of arms right, that then it would ultimately.
But you haven't seen anything that supports that?
I don't know what the future forecast is going to be.
Okay. And finally, one more thing that I have to mention. As you know, because I saw him in the shop right yesterday, today I had to stop again at the shop. And as I was walking out of the shop, I see a young man with what seemed to be two guns.
I'm sorry? Repeat that, two?
You know what a gun is?
Guns. Is that two of them? Yes, I know what a gun is. I just wanted to make sure that's what you said.
You heard it right. I didn't get close to him, of course. I mean, I may look stupid, but because of, obviously, what the guns. He didn't have any, he wasn't a police officer, or he wasn't dressed as a police officer. Maybe he was a detective, maybe he was something else, and he was walking like, you know, nonchalant through the parking lot into the shop. He made me uncomfortable, and I'm sure he made a lot of people uncomfortable, the fact that this guy in his 30s had, was carrying, you know, two holsters, what seemed to be two holsters with two guns, and no idea. Some of them, they have like the shield, and at least you can tell that they are, you know, officers or something like that. Wasn't that, isn't there a law in this town that they should have some form of identification? Or, like I said, he made me awful, and I, you know, I got in the car and I sped out of the parking lot as fast as possible. Obviously, nothing happened, otherwise we would have heard, but.
Well, the first thing, Mr. Fernandez, we'll definitely look into why there was an individual walking into a store with two guns and contact management and see if that's, and see if that's something of a security nature, which, but to answer your direct question, can an individual carry two guns? I gather if they're licensed and they have the proper credentials that they can carry, if there's an enforcement person.
No, you can't, no one can carry.
Right, but if they're enforcement, aren't they? Right, if they're a law enforcement officer.
But shouldn't, shouldn't they have any, shouldn't be in uniform?
Well, uniforms can vary. Some law enforcement officers wear suits and be able to carry guns, also display their shields.
This young one had a polo shirt like this, and he seemed like, like two.
See the front of him anyway. Say that again. See the front of him anyway.
Um, I stay away as far as.
The shield may have been right in front of the gun.
Or it may be to the side. I didn't see it.
And I don't know, but we will contact.
But I wasn't going to get any closer.
That's okay. You did the right thing, Mr. Fernandez. We'll look into it.
Okay.
We'll look into it. Thank you, Seth, for reporting. The floor is open.
Good evening. Andrew Paget, 78 Franklin Road, 105 and 107 Main Street, between Center and Stevens is my interest in town.
And your home address, sir.
78 Franklin Road.
Thank you.
Recently, over Labor Day weekend, parking spots were painted in our town center everywhere but between Center and Stevens on the south side of Main Street, eastbound traffic side. Could you inform me when they will be painted?
Mayor, can you answer that question? Mayor, can you answer that question?
I do know what the cul-de-sac coming, but it was extremely marked for our parking spots to be used at the Woodland Park, so I don't know why that would be.
Could you tell me why they weren't painted at that time?
I can't, I don't know.
Who was in charge of that? Who's?
I don't know if the county did that or our DPD did that, I'm not sure.
Mr. Simone, could he?
Mr. Simone, was that our department doing it, or was it county?
No, that's the county that does that. We ran out of time.
Okay. It will be scheduled when the appropriate weather permits and the time allows with his department, he will do it.
Is there any chance that you could get it done before?
He answered the question, when the weather permits and the time allows with his department, he will do it.
Just seems funny that this spot keeps getting omitted here on Main Street.
I don't think it's done on purpose, it's just where the work stops, sir.
One other question.
Yes.
Did we get any talk about moving this podium forward so we could get it into view?
Again, you could blame me for that. I have yet to caucus the council on that issue. I will. Unfortunately, I couldn't get to it last week due to other pertinent issues. I understand your concern that you'd like to maybe have people see you, or those people speaking be able to see the individuals talking. I do want to ask, not that I want to poll everyone, but are you done with any other questions?
No, that's.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fernandez, can you approach the podium? Yes, yeah. What is, how do you feel if the podium was pushed forward and the residents were able to be seen on TV? Because you attended every meeting.
It wouldn't bother me.
Okay, thank you.
It actually bothers me more, and I was going to bring up this point, but I thought for the, for the three minutes were over. And I read quite a few emails, and I'm sure the mayor has read quite a few emails regarding the sound, the video sound on, in the meetings that.
Right.
I'm sure you've read them as well. Can that be taken care of?
We're working, judging on our sound, sir.
As far as, just let me know, so I bring my best suit that day.
Okay, all right, Mr. Fernandez, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that it's come forward, have a motion to close the public comment? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Second. All those in favor, that motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. This meeting is now closed.